Okay, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. Today is Monday, the 24th day of January in the year 2022. This is a City Council Caucus meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. We had a scheduled 4:00 p.m. start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 4:04 p.m. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Counselperson Ridley. Counselperson Prince Arie. Just make sure that we're speaking into the mic and the mic is on. Counselperson Bajiano. Counselperson Saleh. Okay. Counselperson Solomon. Okay. Counselperson Gilmore. Counselperson Dejees. And Counsel President Waterman. And Counselperson Solomon is present. So we have eight council members present at 4:04 p.m. There you go.
Hello? Okay.
Just got to make sure you're close to the mic. On behalf of City Council President Joyce Waterman, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2022. And filed in the office of the city clerk on Thursday, October 28, 2021, in addition at its time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, January 20, 2022, at 3:00 p.m. to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website, so I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Counsel President, would you like me to take it from the top?
We call it.
Oh, okay.
I got a list.
Good afternoon. I'm here for 10.7 resolution, seeking authorization from the council to settle some tax court appeals. With your permission, I'd like to direct you to the bigger items that we have on the resolution. We are talking about 620 Montgomery, where substantial decrease on taxes for 2018 all the way to 2020. Now, this particular property, you might be familiar. This is the senior housing right across from the former medical center. It's basically abandoned right now, so there's no revenue generated on that property. Now, another item that I'd like to focus is the Nine Region Street. The COVID thing we have, there's no question that it negatively impacted the Class 4s, the Class 4 commercial, you're talking about mixed-use property and the apartment buildings. So with the ratio basically coming down from the 100% we have, currently, we are working on a 20% basically in reduced ratio. So that means a property that's worth, say, 100%, 88%. They should only be assessed at 85 or 86% right now. So the total reduction, basically, based on our opinion and with the concurrent opinions of our appraisers, these properties warrant reduction in assessments. That's why we are seeking the authorization from the council to settle this. If you have any questions?
Questions, anyone? Go ahead, James.
Thank you, assessor. Can you just say a little bit more about why you believe the Nine Region Street assessment is, you know, should be lowered by, I think roughly, is it 11 million and then 15 million?
In 2018, that's the revaluation effective date we had, there are times, basically, during the revale period, the income and expense statement that were submitted may not be verified at the time. That's one of the areas, basically, that we've been settling in terms of reductions in the assessment. In other words, the income receipts were kind of overestimated when they came up with the value for the 2018 and 2019.
So just so I'm understanding, so when we redid the revale in, you know, 2017, it was based on the value as of October 15, 2017? Is that right?
That's correct.
And you're saying that the income receipt statements subsequent to that showed that the 2017 valuation was higher than what their actual income was?
That's correct.
Wait, do you have those income statements where they submitted by the developer?
I'll, you know, I'll submit that before the council meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great. And it's based on, just so I'm clear, it's based on 2018 and 2019?
Right.
Got it, okay. Because I'm also interested in, you know, pandemic. Obviously, some of the income receipts would have changed too. But yeah, if you could just submit their income receipts so we can see what that looks like for Nine Region Street, that'd be great.
Okay, we will.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here on behalf of City Planning to provide a run-through of ordinance 22-010.
Matt, which one? We couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, it's 3.7. 22-010.
It's an ordinance adopting amendments to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan regarding the creation of the Berry Lane Park North Zone at 417 Communipore Avenue.
All right, so good afternoon, council. This is in, I guess, a long time coming. This ordinance was first brought before council at the end of 2020, and I am back before City Plan, on behalf of City Planning, before you. The WHEREAS clauses specify the order of events to date. I recommend that you read through those thoroughly, but I'm going to summarize them a little bit here tonight.
Matt, you have to...
Matt, if you could try to keep the mic by, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Hard to read with this thing. All right. All right, so on December 16, 2020, the City Council enacted ordinance 20-103, which is attached to this new ordinance. It is exactly the same form as that one was adopted. There are two additional enclosures as part of this ordinance that are supplementing that ordinance which was adopted and enacted by a vote of six to two, one absent. In early 2021, Morris Canal Community Development Corporation filed an action in lieu of prerogative writ. On September 23, 2021, the judge issued a written opinion and entered an order specifically remanding the matter back to the planning board and City Council to expound upon the findings of facts in the record that support the conclusion that the amendments of the plan are consistent with the Jersey City master plan, and to delineate those supplemental findings and reasons for past decisions in a resolution or ordinance where appropriate. On December 7, 2021, the amendment was remanded to the planning board. At the conclusion of that planning board's public hearing, all commissioners present voted in the affirmative by a vote of five to zero, finding the amendment consistent with the city's master plan, recommending adoption of the amendment to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan regarding the creation of Berry Lane Park North Zone, and recommend approval of the same by the City Council. A planning board resolution to the same was memorialized on January 4, 2022, which is attached. Just want to take a moment for some housekeeping. In preparation for this evening, I discovered there was a typo on page two and four of the ordinance. It says 2021 with regards to the January 4 resolution. It should say 2022. Before I move on, it's important that I quote the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, NJSA 40A:12A-77D, specifies that all provisions of the redevelopment plan shall be either substantially consistent with the municipal master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan, but the municipal governing body may adopt the redevelopment plan which is inconsistent with or not designed to effectuate the master plan by affirmative vote of a majority of its full authorized membership with the reasons for so acting forth in the redevelopment plan. With that said, I'll now familiarize you with the organization of the ordinance 22-010. On page four is the fact sheet, which lists attachments and enclosures to this ordinance. There is the January 4, 2022 resolution of the planning board, the staff memo of the city, from City Planning to the planning board dated December 7, 2021, and the full packet of ordinance 20-103 as it was adopted. Again, nothing has changed in that package or the language of the amendment. The planning board identified and affirmed 28 goals, objectives, strategies, actions, and key recommendations of the Jersey City master plan that the amendment effectuated, which are detailed in the January 4, 2022 resolution and the December 7, 2021 staff memo enclosed. In their latest reaffirmed recommendation to City Council, the planning board makes reference to the master plan goals, land use objectives, housing objectives, economic development objectives, community facilities objectives, historic preservation objectives, circulation element goals, objectives, strategies, and actions, and the recreation and open space master plan key recommendations. By way of just reminding the council people and those new council people here tonight, to summarize, the community benefits required by the amendments include right-of-way widening. Currently, there's a portion of Woodward Street that is very narrow. The zoning requires dedication of private property to widen it to 60 feet, which is a normal city right-of-way width. Inclusionary housing requirements requiring 5% onsite affordable housing. Recreation center requirements requiring the construction and dedication of a recreation center of at least 22,000 square feet with a basketball court. Other interior spaces and activities to still be determined, administrative offices, as well as parking for 40 vehicles available to the general public directly adjacent to Berry Lane Park. Preservation of the Steel Tech Head House building, which is to be adaptively reused for retail, restaurant, or other commercial use as permitted. Neighborhood commercial facility requirements, which requires 14,000 square feet of commercial along Communipaw Avenue, and of which 5,600 square feet is to be set aside for small minority women and veteran-owned businesses as business enterprises and/or disadvantaged business enterprises that are certified by the state, as well as subsidized rents for those businesses that are also required. Public open space requirements are also a community benefit of the amendment. Two public open spaces are required to be built and open to the public. The larger space is nearly half an acre at 20,000 square feet, and the smaller is a 30-foot wide plaza between the neighborhood commercial facility that I just mentioned and the preserved Steel Tech Head House. If there are any questions on this ordinance, I am here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Anyone?
Yes, a few questions. Matt, did the designation expire on this particular, on this particular project, the JCRRA designation?
I'm not familiar with the designation on this particular project.
So you don't know if it expired or not?
No, I do not.
And also, with regards to the community givebacks, I know it was very unclear to many people as to exactly, is this going to be a white box or a recreation center?
The basketball court is required to be completed. The programming for the other spaces are to be determined, but they are to be built as a white box, as you said, yes.
So it's to be determined, so we don't know exactly what, exactly what's going on?
No, but if you, there's more language to that. It's kind of difficult because the old ordinance that was adopted, it doubled up on the page numbers. But if you go to about page 28, that's the beginning of the amendment language that was adopted by council. And then there's paragraph K5, which speaks to all of the recreation centers' center requirements, and I can just read that into the record here. I'm skipping ahead just to answer this particular question. The construction obligation will consist of the white box construction, including elements such as the building shell, closed walls, roof, windows, doors, stairwells, restrooms, code-required electric, sprinkler, and basic HVAC. The construction obligation includes the full construction of the basketball court, such as hardwood floors, basketball rims and backboards, and floor paint. There's some more information there, but...
Oh, just so the record reflect, this is not a state-of-the-art rec center, correct?
Excuse me?
Just so the record reflect, this is not a state-of-the-art rec center.
I do not know how to answer that question.
You don't know what a state-of-the-art rec center is? You don't know what's entailed in that?
Well, I'll read on, but as a prerequisite for a complete application, the designated redevelopment shall work with the Division of Architecture, Division of City Planning, the Ward F. councilperson, and any other entity deemed necessary to determine the programmatic needs of the recreation center, the results which shall be reflected in any site plan application. It is envisioned that the recreation center will be, will have a mix of facilities related to sports, exercise, dance, education, technology, arts, and other curricular activities. Administrative offices and storage spaces will be needed as well. I believe that that language speaks to the programming that is yet to be determined, so I don't know how to answer your question.
Yeah, because I'm extremely confused as it relates, because there's a lot of uncertainties here, right? This might go in, we might have these programs. It's a state-of-the-art, it's a white box. We don't really have a lot of clarity. You don't know if the designation expired or not, or nothing. So it's just no concrete, well, not a lot of concrete evidence on this particular site, which is a bunch of other puzzling things as well. But that's it. I guess you answered the question to your best of your ability, and we're essentially at the same spot we started at.
Well, to give you assurance and maybe the other council people, the property owner has to be designated and have an executed redevelopment agreement in order to allow themselves the ability to utilize the zoning that's in this amendment. If they do not have an RDA executed by the JCRRA and are not designated, they are bound by the industrial zone of that redevelopment plan. That's stated right in the amendment.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Go ahead, James.
Matt and Corporation Council, I don't know exactly who to direct this to, but I just had a technical legal question, which was, you know, I know this came before the council, before we passed the inclusionary zoning ordinance, but now it's coming back to us after passage of the ordinance in December of '21, and I just want, you know, legal clarification on if it applies to this project or not.
Sure, councilmen. So this case was considered, and the opinion was issued by the court on September 23. I believe the inclusionary zoning ordinance went into effect in December of 2021. More importantly, however, this amendment was adopted on December 16, 2020, and the court considered this as a snapshot in time, essentially, of December 16, 2020, in the totality of the circumstances. Therefore, because this plan was adopted prior to the IZO, the court considered it prior to the IZO under the terms of City Planning prior to the imposition of, the enactment of the IZO, the terms of the IZO would not necessarily apply to this project.
Okay, great. I just want legal confirmation that because of this timeline, IZO doesn't apply, and so we consider it on its merits pro or con.
Anyone else? Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to introduce two ordinances. The first one, agenda number 3.5, ordinance 22-008. In coordination with Councilwoman Prince Arie, this ordinance is to expand Zone 11, which is resident-only, and you can only park between 3:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday with a valid permit. Currently, this is the zone around the St. Peters University area, and it includes Glenwood Ave, Montgomery Street, Fairmount Ave, Duncan Avenue between West Side and Bergen, and we will expand it south to include Fairview Ave, Jewett Ave, and Kensington Avenue between West Side Avenue and Bergen. And this is to help the residents find on-street parking rather than compete with the students, employees, and visitors of St. Peters University.
Any questions? Next one, Jennifer.
Okay, the next one is agenda number 3.6, ordinance number 22-009. This is for parking for handicap reserved parking spaces. All of the residents listed on the ordinance submitted applications that were reviewed by the on-call doctor, Dr. Benz, as well as reviewed and approved by the committee.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Counsel President, before you move on, I just wanted to reflect for the record. Counselperson Saleh's presence at 4:13 p.m., so we now have all nine council members present at 4:13. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Kyle Greaves from the Budget Office. I have two items tonight, first one being REZO 22-057, agenda item 10.1. This is just an amendment to the amount for a grant that we received on last year's budget. That is the Royd Grant. So this is just an amendment reflecting the actual amount received.
Any questions? Next one, Kyle.
The second item is ordinance number 22-011, agenda number 3.8. So this is an ordinance amending the art levy. So this, I just want to make clear that the ordinance isn't amending the amount to be collected in this calendar year. It is just striking out Chapter 304, Article 4.1b, the city hereby imposes an annual levy amount of one quarter of a penny per $100 of the total municipal ancestral property. So last year was the first year we had this levy. We should have, the state advised us to set the levy by resolution rather than ordinance. So what we're doing today is just striking that out of the ordinance, and we'll present a resolution for this year's levy at another council meeting.
What's the reason for changing it from putting the levy in the ordinance versus the resolution? I mean, I understand logistically it'd be easier to change.
So since we do the levy every year, rather than going back to amend an ordinance and have two readings every year, it's advised that we just have a resolution. So there's no amendment process. It's just, we'll establish the levy for the current year, and then next year we'll have another resolution for 2023, rather than coming back to reading ordinance and, you know, just makes it a lot more efficient.
Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kyle.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to present three resolutions, Resolution 10.12, 13, and 14. The first being 10.12, Resolution 22-068. It is a resolution for a claim for New Pathway Counseling Services, which is our EAP program for employees for the months of April through October, while services were still being rendered as the RFP process was pending.
Any questions? Go ahead, Nicole.
Okay. I would then like to jump to 10.14. This is the actual award of the contract for the EAP program. That RFP that I referred to earlier was responded by one bidder, which was New Pathways Counseling Services again.
Can you explain the EAP program?
EAP program is an employee assistance program, so they offer counseling, grief counseling services, substance abuse services for employees. All of our employees are entitled to this particular benefit. They just make their appointments and go to the program.
Thank you.
How long have we had this contract?
This, this company has been with the city for several years. I don't know exactly off the top of my head exactly how many, but this is a new contract that's being awarded as of January 1st.
So we've used them for several years for this same service?
Correct.
And how does one getting, how does one become eligible? How does one know about this?
Well, there's a RFP process that the purchasing off, purchasing division...
Oh, no, no. Excuse me. The employees?
It's part of the new hire process. We inform all the employees of their benefits when they come onboard.
Okay.
I mean, at some point, they may forget that it's available to them, but then their supervisors and managers can also refer them to our office to get the information for the EAP program.
And they're available to also other employees that have been working for a while?
To all employees.
To all employees?
And then there's also times where we would order or request that they send representatives from their companies to our various locations in the event that there's a traumatic event that the employees at that particular location can identify with and need counseling for.
Are there email blasts to every department with regards to this available service?
Not at the moment, but we can definitely implement that in the future.
Thank you.
No problem.
Does this only get triggered when an event happens at work, or is it for personal life things that may occur that are...
Personal life things that may occur as well.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. And the last one would be 10.13, Resolution 22-069. This is a claim for June through November for the PNA group. Last week, you may remember, we actually awarded this contract, so this claim was for services rendered while that RFP was also pending.
Any questions? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Stacy?
I'm here for three resolutions. 10.9, which is a gift of purchase of Aura Rings from the Jersey City Economic Development Corporation. There was an award last year from RB to JCEDC for World Economic Forum activities. And this is an incentive purchase to marry the AeroFarms Healthy Greens JC program.
Any questions?
What are Aura Rings?
Aura Rings are the latest technology in wearables. So they are a ring that we will be giving out to farm members that have comorbidities that join our program. And it tracks similar things that a Fitbit does or an iWatch, but it does slightly more, like track your temperature, your oxygen, your sleep patterns. And the World Economic Forum introduced this to us as we were talking to them about incentives for our residents to join the AeroFarms program. So part of the bigger vision, which we'll come back with other resolutions as they manifest themselves in Memorandums of Understanding with Quest Diagnostics, with IBM Aura and other, is that the concept of a stages of change model for the number of times that people come to pick up greens, which today we were harvesting micro broccoli. When they come to pick up greens and we provide them with recipes or education, we'd also like to provide them with other things so that they can self-monitor when they're not around and see if, you know, if, you know, at a later date, they can check in on their goals and see if they're meeting their goals with like some self-awareness tools like a wearable.
Is this a opt-in?
Yeah, this is an opt-in. This is an opt-in. There's a small quantity that we're starting out with at the Housing Authority. And when we roll out the Bethune Center, we feel like when we get to the schools, they might want something else as an incentive. So we've been meeting with the schools, and we know that our, at our senior centers, they have other incentive ideas that they would like. So we're just, you know, it was an opportunity for us to partner with a state-of-the-art wearable that actually is, there's been a lot of research related to the Aura Ring as a predictor for someone to get tested for COVID because it monitors your temperature, it monitors your oxygen, and you can be made aware of that with like your ring buzzing on you, and you can check that.
My last question is, who has access to this data? And?
Yeah, so right now, nobody but the individual has access to the data. And so the individual would sign up, and just like they would sign up their own iPhone or something like that, they would get that data. We would like to be able to use anonymous data. So about the success of using digital wearables, but we have not completed an IRB process yet. We're working with the university on that. And there's just a few more things to look through because in order to do that, which, you know, this was all inspired by Councilman Solomon's request for a peer-reviewed article on the work that we're doing around AeroFarms. And so we're trying to put all the tools together so we can compare standard nutrition education and result, nutrition education with incentive of food to take home and result. And then if you're adding data wearable, like, does that inspire someone to continue down the journey of health?
Anyone else?
Director, I have a question. So with respect to, it's a ring that we're wearing, right?
Yes.
So how accurate is that information with respect to saturation stats, like, like we talked about? Or what else does it do?
So currently, and I can share with you some of the recent data that's been done by Duke University and I think it's University of California, San Diego, who had been doing some data related to the Aura Ring and COVID because the ring is fitted to you. So we would measure any individual that's interested in a ring, and then, you know, we would offer them the other round of incentives if you want to learn your A1 number, if you want your cholesterol, if you want all of these other things with other partner. And then when they come back the next week, hopefully, we have the ring by then because we have to get it in the mail from our partners. And then when they're fitted, we'll share with them, you know, this is how you use it, this is how, you know, all of these other things. So saturation points on, like, I mean, I think very similar. It's got higher technology than the iWatch, so. And so it's a little bit more state-of-the-art, and they just came out with a next-level program that helps people track how effective their sleep is. So we thought that because this is what we're hearing in the community, like, these are issues that people have, where like if we give you this tool, maybe you can monitor some of your issues and then, you know, have a conversation with them on how to communicate that with their doctor or finding a doctor that's right for them and so forth.
So you just answered that because I was trying to figure out because there's got to be a responsible person.
Absolutely. You know, obviously, we have.
Read this data, and if we go down the avenues of cholesterol or A1Cs, you know, there's got to be a person who understands that because if that individual gets a red flag and doesn't know what, you know, he or she is going through, then that could pose, you know, be a problem.
Yeah.
But if there's a response, that was where I was getting.
Yeah, so we would have on our team, so obviously, there's more stuff to come to you over time, but we've been talking to one of our grand tours, and they're very interested in supporting this for research, right? Because research can be really expensive and to try and, you know, model that. So we, we would envision one of our data analysts internally that works currently in innovation, so how innovation would deal with all this technology as, as tools. And someone on the IBM side that would help us with the wearables and Aura themselves. Everything sits in a cloud for the individual. And today, we were at Marion, and the executive director there, Vivian Brady Phillips, offered that her team that does the digital divide work. They give laptops and tablets to seniors in the Housing Authority, would help seniors also navigate that for seniors that don't have smartphones. If they're interested.
Next one, Stacy.
Okay. That is Resolution 1010, and that is, it's a part of our annual gift from the Hudson County Office on Aging. This grant funds the senior activities, the bus trips, and Meals on Wheels, and senior congregate meals to a certain percentage. And then obviously, we pay for the other part. So right now, we're at about a 60-40, 60% being county-funded, 40% being city-funded. We are seeking obvious support for the city-funded side. We typically go to the Division of Community Development, and we're talking to finance about making that whole. Obviously, we've seen a great increase in our Meals on Wheels since the beginning of COVID. I want to continue to honor and serve all of those residents because the county grant just can't provide for all of that.
Questions? Go ahead, Stacy.
And then 1011 is just a resolution for us to get medical waste removed. This is with Sampro. Last year, we started our vaccines at one location and then went, as we've grown, to four locations, operating five days a week, and then some locations six, and then pop-up sites. We're seeing that we should just get a move on early and get that resolution out so that we can start medical waste collection for the vaccine sites.
Questions?
Stacy, do they pick, I'm sorry, Director, do they pick up the medical waste? Do we take the medical waste to the, to the, to the plant? Or they pick them up?
No, they pick it up. So they come to every location. We'll let them know when we add locations. So for example, right now, we have two testing locations for rapid tests at the Maureen Collier and Connor Center. So we add that to the Sampro to have them come and pick all of that medical waste up. So it becomes part of their route, and we make edits to those routes as necessary.
Why is bespoke health not taking care of the medical waste?
Because medical waste is only allowed to be taken care of by specific OSHA requirements, and so it has to be external.
They can't subcontract it to someone?
Well, last year, they paid for it because it got really big really fast, and we reimbursed them for it. But we wanted to have some like cleaner lines of, of work. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we're taking care of our own waste. I mean, they, they could do it, and, but we already have a relationship with them to pick up at the city clinic as it is. So Sampro already has a vendor relationship with us. And it just makes it more clear so I can like call them quicker and say, "Hey, get over there because they saw too many people," rather than have someone onsite, start having relationships with Sampro. It's a lot easier if we did it directly. And more effective.
I just felt that if, you know, we're giving them millions of dollars, they could have easily, you know.
They did last year. And so we're trying to not give them as much and try to make sure that we're, you know. They paid Sampro for us last year. They, they could do that again, but I thought it would be cleaner lines of an audit for us in the future.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Director Kears?
Good afternoon, President Waterman, members of the City Council.
Good afternoon, Director.
Eight items to speak on. I had sent out a memo earlier today just to clarify seven of the eight. I received a call from Director Moody regarding one that's on also. She's unavailable to come due to a family issue. That'll be Item 1017. That's a resolution authorizing award of a contract to Lawman Supply for the purchase and delivery of Spear Gold ammunition under the New Jersey State Contract for the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police. The contract, excuse me?
Go ahead, go ahead, Director.
This would be 1017. Contractors deliver ammunition for our police department. Members of the department are required by New Jersey Attorney General Guidelines to qualify twice a year, and also for the academy class that's currently in the Hudson County Police Academy. They awarded through a state contract through Lawman Supply Company. The total of the REZO is $66,041.50.
Right. What exactly is our Spear Gold ammunition?
I'm sorry, Councilman, can you?
What exactly is, what type of ammunition is this?
The ammunition, this is, in this case, is Spear Gold dot 45 caliber ammunition. Officers are required to qualify with the ammunition that they carry. This is the ammunition for those officers carrying the 45 automatics, and they are required to qualify with the same type of ammunition.
So this is a special, so a certain set of officers carry a certain type of ammunition?
There are two weapons currently authorized in the police department. One is a 45 caliber, and one is a 9 millimeter. This is for the officers that are carrying the 45 calibers.
Okay.
Any questions? Next one, Director.
Okay, just bear with me, please.
10.18.
Okay, the next one I have is 1018. And that will be an award of contract to Millennium Communications to upgrade 50 of our closed-circuit CCTV cameras in service since 2009 at various locations throughout the city. When we first upgraded the cameras in 2009, this is all covered by the Homeland Security Grant. The cameras have an approximate shelf life of seven to eight years. Obviously, we're into 12 years, 13 years, actually, on some of these cameras. And it's bringing them up to the more high-resolution cameras and cameras that are currently not, not operating, getting them back into service.
No. Does it have the locations of?
Yes, I supplied that in the memo earlier, Councilman.
Yes, I see. So I guess my question is, the cameras in Ward F, are all those cameras already up to speed as these ones will be once they're done?
The majority of these cameras were installed during Phase 1 in 2009. They're various locations. We've since upgraded a, I would say, close to 150 cameras, both in Ward F and Ward A. And they've been upgraded in the last three or four cycles.
In the three or four cycles?
Cycles, right.
Which is a cycle?
Funding cycles.
Oh, funding cycle.
Right.
I only see one here in the Heights for Patterson Plank in Congress. Are there any, any plans to upgrade the cameras? There's a lot of broken cameras in the Heights that I think need to be fixed or upgraded.
Yes, we do. What we've been doing, Councilman, as I say, these I've been trying to get approved for a good number of years, either the oldest cameras we have in place. As we get close to the life expectancy, we replace the other cameras. We did a considerable amount in, in Ward D also, Patterson Plank Road. We did, just did an upgrade on one of the cameras there, Palisade Avenue, Franklin Central Avenue. 1019 is a contract to award to Gold Type Business Machines, GTBM, to provide and install six automated license plate readers. That's ALPR cameras. And this will be on the new Route 7 bridge located between Carney and Jersey City. Our goal is to provide the automated license plates cameras on all egresses and egresses throughout the city. We currently have them on a Hackensack River Bridge. This will cover the bridge coming in from Carney. And then we're moving in the next phase to cover Tonley Avenue and North Bergen side. They've proven to be a valuable tool for, in crime fighting, whereas the information is shared with all regional police departments and law enforcement agencies, and also covered under the UASI grant.
Any questions?
Are they reading every license plate that comes over those roads? Or is it?
I'm sorry, Council. Sorry.
Are they reading every license plate that comes over those roads?
That's correct. Yeah. For instance, what'll happen is when we first installed the Hackensack River Bridge cameras, there was a, we had an uptick in vehicles that involved in criminal activity coming in both from Newark and traveling from Jersey City into Newark, resulted in numerous arrests. So yes, every car that crosses these bridges is recorded.
Go ahead, Director.
1021, this is an emergency contract that was awarded to BMS to repair the associated basement at 3 Jackson Square. That's as a result of damages sustained by Tropical Storm Henry.
Any questions? Go ahead, Director.
1022, purchasing agent authorized to sell various motor vehicles at public auction, which would be on their service life. As we discussed the other day during our meeting, one of the things we've undertaken is replacing vehicles that's been in service for extended periods of time. We're no longer repairing vehicles 10, 12 years old, and we found that in vast, they would dispose them for scrap. We've been able to sell them at public auction and gain some funding back for the city coffers. 1023, same thing. This is sell public, various pieces of equipment. I also included that attachment. These are basically pieces of equipment, VMS boards, variable message signboards, older trucks, things like that, that no longer have serviceability. However, they are worth, you know, funds on the, on the open market. So we found that this has been, been successful in the past, and there again, we'd like to continue doing that.
Any questions? Go ahead, Director.
1024 is a contract with AERA MAX to provide pro- 1024 is a contract with AERA MAX to provide pro-air purifiers for locations in a municipal complex, municipal court complex. We had some issues in the basement area up there, specific to the police property room and also the Bureau of Criminal Identification. These air purifiers provide a safe environment for the workers and the folks using that area.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is, in some ways, more for the BA than, than Director Kiers. But, you know, in, with, you know, the importance of filtration and COVID prevention, I initially thought this agenda item was around the purchase of air purifiers for the city. Can you give us an update on sort of where we are with, you know, how many we've purchased, where we've deployed them and if it makes sense for us to, you know, purchase more?
Sure, Councilman, thank you. So we were looking at numerous ways of doing this, whether it be mobile units at a close proximity to an office desk or more central units that would be costed out. So we took a look at that and we feel that the larger units would be better, just with the mobility of individuals walking through and customer service coming in. So we have some specs ready that we're going to have to RFP and award a contract for that. I don't want to speak too specific about that, but we do have a plan to roll that out. It will use capital funds and then potentially use our money to receive those funds back. So we are in the process of doing that within maybe the next three months.
And is that intended to cover all municipal facilities or?
Yeah, correct. Offices and common spaces.
Okay, great.
Okay, the last one I have is 1025. An et is a resolution authorizing the award of contract to Morton Salt. And that's for the rock salt that we use for snow conditions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Director.
Have a good day.
Sean, you can take it from the top. I have no more. That's it. There's no employee out here, correct? Okay, take it from the top. When we get to each one, if we need to ask questions, if you're here, just step up to the podium.
Okay. So I'm going to take it from the top. Item 3.1, City Ordinance 22-004 is a vacation ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City to vacate a portion of 13th Street between Provo Street and Barnum Street in the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, the State of New Jersey. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Chuck Tarrington here, who's the attorney.
Anyone have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's worth having Chuck go through this, Council President.
Rick, you have something to say?
This was actually planned a year, almost a year and a half ago. It's about time it's getting done.
Okay, Chuck, give us a lowdown.
Okay, so, yeah. For the record, Charles Harrington of County Foley, I'm here on behalf of 3.1 and 3.2 because the two ordinances are, are married together with the vacation of a portion of 13th Street between Provo Street and Barnum Street. This area is between 12th and 14th Street, which is more commonly known as basically the entrance to the Holland Tunnel going to the city is 12th Street. The exit to the, from the Holland Tunnel coming from the city is 14th Street. So it's the area between the two. My client owns two properties that front on Marin Boulevard, the Mecca Trucking property that's probably more, more of a landmark that you would know. So he's approved for two residential towers there and the Port Authority owns the property behind that to the east, up to the, the light rail line. So we have been working on this for about three years with the Port Authority, planning, city engineering, emergency services, the Law Department. And the proposal is to create a pedestrian mall, walkway from Provo Street through the portion of 12th Street that is not part of the entrance to the tunnel. So right now, if you go over there, you'll see it's occupied by all the Port Authority vehicles. There really is no 12th Street. So the idea is my, my client would develop, improve a pedestrian walkway that would serve everybody. It's not just serving his, his project. It would serve all of, you know, the, the properties to the, to the north and to the west there in the Jersey Avenue area, which is really developing. And you get a connection now between those areas and, and Newport. It's, it's connectivity so that you don't necessarily have to cross over the long stretch at 12th Street and go to the Newport Mall and then go through the Newport Mall just to get over there and through the different neighborhoods. So it's really, I think, is consistent with the intent of the, the master plan to create this connectivity. And then my client, the property owner, he would be responsible not only for building it, maintaining it, liability and perpetuity. Now, how does the Port Authority work into this? They own or control properties to the, the easternmost part of this that we need access for easement in perpetuity to access Newport Parkway. Otherwise, you dead end at that portion of 12th Street. So we have been working through this with various people, the Port Authority, as I'm sure this council knows, it's, 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 you know, a puzzle trying to put everything together. But we, we have a plan together. The idea for the vacation of 13th Street, that portion is the Port Authority is actively using it now. That would be vacated. But this, this 12th Street would be improved by my client. They would take their, all their equipment off there and have this in perpetuity for, for this use by everybody. There is, I should note, there's, there's basically a sunset provision here so that the pedestrian mall and walkway needs to be put in place within five years. If it's not, there's also a provision in, in the vacation ordinance that the property, that vacation could, could revert and go back to the city. So if there's, there's, not pressure is probably not the right word, but there's triggers on, on both parties to get this done. And then at the end of the day, I believe it's a public benefit and a win-win.
Any questions? James? Okay, thanks, Chuck.
Chuck, could I see you for a second over here?
Okay, Sean.
All righty. Item 3.2, City Ordinance 22-005 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a deed easement with 14 Florence Street Corp. permitting the developer to make improvements on a portion of 12th Street, public right of way in the east area of Provo Street and continuing area adjacent to the north side of Newport Parkway in connection with the construction of the new pedestrian plaza, which we just touched on, I apologize. Item 3.3, City Ordinance 22-006 is a vacation ordinance by the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City vacation a portion of Bleeker Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Go ahead, Bob.
If there's any questions, we have our attorney for the vacation, Bob Kavanaugh.
Good afternoon, everyone. Bob Kavanaugh, Waters McPherson, McNeil, representing 651 Tonley Avenue LLC. It's actually daylight transport, which is an active concern down on Tonley Avenue, a distribution center. They're going to be expanding. We have a redevelopment plan with the city and we have a redevelopers agreement with JCRA. We're moving forward with the site plan that's been submitted for review by the planning department and part of the site. We've been doing an, excuse me, an assemblage of all the properties and there, if you're familiar with Tonley Avenue, Dubose Auto Body Shop, they have sold, we purchased the property. And the daylight site and now with the, the acquisition of Dubose, the Bleaker Street, Paper Street between those two properties is what we're now seeking to vacate so we can just have the complete footprint to move forward with the site plan and the development of the distribution center.
Any questions?
Can we meet after this meeting so we could discuss?
Sure.
Thanks a lot, Bob. Go ahead, Sean.
Okay. Item 3.4, City Ordinance 22-007 is an ordinance amending Chapter 53 Personnel, Article 7 Workplace Regulation, Section C Compensation and Article 11 Fixed Salaries to modify the salary and employment benefits for full-time and part-time aides to councilpersons of the City of Jersey City pursuant to state law.
Peter, you want to elaborate on that?
Do you want me to?
Oh, go ahead, James. I was going to get Peter too. Go ahead. Go ahead, James.
Yeah, just, Councilman, I'm happy to defer to you or whichever. Sure, I'm happy to take the lead initially and then questions. But what, what this ordinance does is talking to Council President, a number of colleagues, and then with the help of the Law Department is a couple of things. But first and I think most importantly is it puts city ordinance in compliance with state law. State law had set, set a cap of council aides at one when our population was under 270,000. And as we have increased beyond that number in the latest census, it has now increased. So we are above the cap set by state law. And so state law, it's written into the Faulkner Act, says that council aides are permitted for full-time or aid part-time aides. To be clear, this ordinance doesn't mean we are hiring for full or aid part-time aides. It's simply putting the city ordinances in compliance with state law. The second thing it does is it increases the salary. Again, state law had set a cap on the salary. It is now up to municipal ordinance. And we looked at the range for our sister city in Newark. We're the only two cities in this class according to the Faulkner Act. And it has the same range, which is between 50 and 85K for a council, full-time council aide. And then what I would want to work with Council President, the administration and everyone on, is moving us as a council to two full-time aides. We, I think, do extraordinarily work. We are called upon at all hours, at all times. And as we've talked about, whether it was municipal redistricting or Hurricane Ida, we are the front lines of receiving constituent complaints and having two full-time aides would allow us as a council to do a significantly improved service upon what we're all doing. But I also think it increases expectations, right? If we have two full-time aides plus full-time salaries, I think the public can and should demand significantly more of all of us. But I think that is going to lead to significantly better service for all of our constituents.
Well said, James. Well said.
It's also about time Jersey City starts thinking like a real city, a big city that it's become. It's due.
It's due.
Can you explain the, the salary ranges? It's saying 50 to 85 and then you could have up to four per councilperson?
So again, that's, that's what the state law allows, not what we would implement. Again, the range is based off of what the City of Newark set, our sister city. What we would do is in working with the administration and the Budget Office in this year is we would determine how much money we would have and be able to set in those ranges. But what it would clearly say is you cannot either go below or above for a full-time position. Just like today, you have the ability to have one full-time or two part-time. You would, in theory, if we have two full-time, have the ability to have two full-time or one full-time and two part-time or four part-time, right? You would be able to divide that position as each council member sees fit. Does that answer your question?
And what are we doing about the health benefits? It seems like we're removing them from part-time aides. Is that?
That is, again, mimicking state law. So what state law said was that part, it's written into the state statute, that part-time aides are not eligible for health benefits. So it's literally the exact language that from state law was copied into our ordinance.
So if we have aides right now that have health insurance, would they no longer have health insurance after we pass this?
Well, it's specifically designated by the number of hours worked. It, it needs to be tied to a number of hours worked, just simply by how the city code is written and how the state law is drafted as well. I believe the numbers for full-time were 35 to 40 hours per week and for part-time was 15 to 20 hours per week. So if you have an aide that does, you know, again, 35 to 40 hours per week, which, and again, the city code and the Faulkner Act both allow, because your work does not happen during normal business hours, it allows you to have the aides work during not normal business hours as well. So if they do the requisite 35 to 40 hours per week, then they would qualify as full-time and would be entitled to the city health benefits. If you have a part-time aide who does, you know, 15 to 20 hours per week, splitting in half essentially that one full-time aide, that would not be considered for the health benefits access.
Do we know when the health benefits would expire after, like if they're currently part-time and they have health benefits? How long after we pass this would the individual lose the health insurance?
I do not know. I don't know if it's a fait accompli, so to speak. But I will, I'll look into that and get back to you.
I guess, is there, is there any way, let's say, if we budget for two full-time aides at 60,000, is there any way each councilperson can be allotted the 120 to divide it amongst the aides they see fit? Because with, with the threshold in the insurance, that's extremely problematic and it is a possibility that some people can, can lose health insurance. So is that a possibility?
And I think, it's a good question. I think the issue as far as what the salary is set at, it's going to be set by, on an aide-to aide basis. And also written into the, or the code, the, pardon, the ordinance that was drafted, was that the aides will be entitled to periodic evaluations and salary increases that can come from those evaluations. So one full-time aide for one councilperson may not earn the same salary as a full-time aide for another councilperson and may be based on years of experience. It may be based on, you know, any number of factors. So you're talking, if you were talking about taking a total amount of essentially a pool of money that would be allocated per councilperson, I don't think that that would necessarily apply because it would just go from aide to aide. It would be a person-to-person analysis based on who the councilpeople want to hire. It's a very important personal relationship that you have with an aide. So it would need to be, you know, how much you as the councilperson decide, you know, how's their performance and how we would set that salary. So I think the question's a little more nuanced than, I think, I think the answer's a little more nuanced than the question sets forth. But I think Councilman Solomon, we could probably, and you, Councilman Gilmore, we could probably, you know, figure that out in a little more detail here.
Let's sit down and, and see how we can make that work potentially.
Okay.
And also you said, so theoretically, aides can be making difference, different amounts depending on the councilperson, depending on the, the experience?
Yeah, I think there, there are principles that would apply, obviously, which would be we have a pay equity statute in the state that would require that people doing similar work with similar amounts of experience should be paid, you know, close to, if not exactly the same. So that would be part of it. So if one councilperson has an aide who has been with them 20 years, working with them in the city, has that much experience, they may be entitled under this to earn a higher salary than someone who might be, you know, a first-year, brand-new hire and would be brought in maybe a little lower and would come up with some more experience based on positive performance evaluation.
Councilman, if I would, I think like Councilman Solomon alluded to with the Budget Office, what we would typically do in a situation like this is find a common ground of a pool of dollars allocated to each individual councilmember and kind of set that, that number just hypothetically is, say, 60,000 each, right? That would be 120,000. And then you would allocate that to your full-time staff as a full-time or part-time equivalent. So you could split that amongst two part-timers to equal one full-time or vice versa. But I think, not speaking for the council, but just from a fiscal policy, that everyone would typically be allotted the same dollar amount.
And the, and the one other requirement, obviously, is that the hourly rate comply with the city's minimum wage, which is $17 now, I believe.
You know, there was an article a few years ago about Jersey City that people don't realize. We have the Holland Tunnel, the Turnpike, we have bridges, we have a Port of Authority Terminal. And they said in the article that during the day, possibly, almost 1 million people transpire through Jersey City. We are becoming a major city. We are a major city and we have to start thinking like a major city and start changing a lot of our policies. And the residents have to understand this. They want better government. They want a better city. It's going to cost.
Yeah. That's true. Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, Sean.
Okay, the rest of the ordinances were touched on earlier. So we're going to move on to our second readings. Item 4.1, City Ordinance 22-002 is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City establishing Chapter 73, a Women's Advisory Board of the City of Jersey City. Item 4.2, City Ordinance 22-003 is an ordinance amending Chapter 80- Item 4.2, City Ordinance 22-003 is an ordinance amending Chapter 84 Alcoholic Beverages and Cannabis to establish reporting requirements for the Cannabis Control Board. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We have one speaker listed, and we go on to our petitions and communications. Items 6.1 through 6.8, any questions or comments? We do not have any officer communications or reporter directors, we have our claims list, and we'll move on to our resolutions. So, first resolution was touched on earlier by Kyle. Second, item 10.2, Resolution 22-058 is a resolution establishing petty cash funds for various departments and divisions for the calendar year 2022. If there's any questions or comments by the municipal council, just please interrupt me and then we'll get to your question. Item 10.3, City Resolution 22-059 is a resolution authorizing the change of the custodian of the petty cash funds for the Department of the City Council Office. Item 10.4, Resolution 22-060 is a resolution authorizing the change custodian of petty cash funds for the Department of Engineering. Item 10.5, Resolution 22-061 is a resolution authorizing the change of custodian of petty cash funds for the Department of HEDC. Item 10.6, Resolution 22-062 is a resolution authorizing refunds due to overpayments for property tax accounts. Item 10.7 was touched on earlier. Item 10.8, Resolution 22-064 is a resolution honoring the memory of Reverend Dr. Henry Cannon Jr. Item 10.9 through 10.14 were touched on earlier. Excuse me. Item 10.15, City Resolution 22-071 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding and use agreement with the State of New Jersey Department of Military and Veterans Affairs permitting the City of Jersey City to use National Guard Armory at 678 Montgomery Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. Item 10.16, Resolution 22-072 is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to Storage Systems USA for the purchase and installation for various evidence lockers for the Department of Public Safety Division of Police. Items 10.17 through 10.19 were touched on earlier. Item 10.20, Resolution 22-076 is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to Forkett River Diesel and Generator LLC for the removal and replacement of a new 20KW generator for the Department of Public Works Division of Fire, excuse me, Department of Public Safety Division of Fire. Items 10.21 through 10.25 were touched on earlier. Item 10.26 is a resolution, excuse me, Resolution Number 22-082 is a resolution authorizing the closed session of the Municipal Council on February 7, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. to discuss issues related to pending litigation.
I would, I would just say, if anyone has any specific questions they want us to prepare for in advance of that public session, that closed session, rather, please email me directly and we'll get that information teed up.
And last, item 10.27, Resolution 22-083 is a resolution authorizing the settlement of Visitation Sardanas versus the City of Jersey City and Vincent Caruso, docket number HUD L3527-19.
I just had one question with regards, is this, is this individual still an employee with the city?
Need the mic?
Well, actually, both of them.
The plaintiff, Visitation Sardana, she is an employee with the city still. Vincent Caruso is no longer employed with the city.
Okay.
Okay, council members, if there's no other questions or nothing further, may I have a motion to adjourn at 5:18 p.m.?
Motion.
Motion made by, oof, I think that was Councilperson Saleh, thank you, my trusty deputy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilperson Ridley. I'm trying to get used to the voices with the masks on. A motion to adjourn at 5:18 p.m., Councilperson Ridley.
Aye.
Councilperson Prinzary.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana. Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilperson DeJeece.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries 9-0 to adjourn at 5:18 p.m. Thank you so much, Council President, members of the council, members, directors, department directors, division directors, and everyone who showed up today. Thank you for your cooperation, and as always, teamwork makes the dream work. Stay safe, have a great night.